Courtroom in the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the notification, pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag and Christopher Watson will lead us.
Does it mean?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared, I've been traveling. Heavenly Father, I ask that you today that you bless all of those who keep us safe. I ask that you keep us also safe within this heat and that those who are unfortunate enough not to be able to have good air conditioning and that they will, that we will be able to provide what they need to keep them safe and keep them cool and that, amen.
Amen.
I'm so sorry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is to call citizens' input and/or concerns. And I don't have any that have been turned in, so we will consider and take action on Agenda items three through forty-three. Number three is proclamation twenty-three dash zero twenty-five, recognizing Twin City Mission as in its sixtieth anniversary for its service efforts and accomplishments in working with Brazos Valley's most vulnerable citizens. We need a motion in a second.
Oh, so moved.
Motion to approve. Sorry about that, y'all.
I'm glad that I'm not the only one.
I thought, did I miss something?
It's my pleasure to move approval.
Yeah, we're having one of those days.
Miss one week and look what happens.
We're just moving a little slow here.
You've got to relearn everything.
With everything going on, can you tell me who made the motion and who seconded it?
Nancy and myself.
Nancy made it, I'll second. Okay, four seconds. Everybody from Twin City, come on up. I'll read the proclamation. Did we actually vote?
We didn't vote.
Well, I'm just glad it's affecting everybody. How about y'all out there?
Hey, Ann, how are you?
Yeah, we're having one of those. I'm so embarrassed.
Can we still say that here?
No, no, I just, I forgot.
Yellow again.
Again. Hi, good morning, I'm Chuck.
Lindsey, good to see you.
Hey, if Ron says it, you know it's got to be true.
So, I'll read the proclamation, whereas for sixty years that Brazos County's most vulnerable citizens have turned to Twin City Mission's for assistance and organization is marking this important milestone in its history with an anniversary celebration, August the twelfth, twenty twenty-three, featuring sixties-themed celebration. And whereas Twin City Mission serves men, women, and children with a vision of creating a community in which all individuals have the opportunity to hope, for hope, acceptance, and stability in a safe and caring environment, providing resources and assistance to all that are in need. And whereas originally founded in nineteen sixty-three with the goal of alleviating homelessness in Brazos and its neighboring counties, Twin City Mission has evolved to offer a comprehensive range of programming to those in need through programs addressing homeless, violence, abuse, family conflicts, divorce and crisis, life skills deficiencies, and poverty. And whereas these issues continue to be serious problems for many individuals and families in Brazos County, Twin City Mission will continue to seek to restore a person's mental and physical health, rebuild a sense of dignity, and prepare them for them to meet the challenges that they will face in the future. And whereas Twin City Mission is guided by its core values, those being compassion, respect, integrity, transparency, and empowerment. And whereas Twin City's Mission's sixtieth anniversary celebration presents an opportunity to reflect the critical role that the organization has played in guiding numerous Brazos County residents to a bright tomorrow, is indeed fitting to recognize compassionate commitment of its staff as well as its generous community support that has buoyed their efforts. Now therefore, I, Duane Peters, Brazos County Judge, acting on behalf of Brazos County Commissioners' Court, do therefore deem it an honor and pleasure to recognize the service efforts and accomplishment of this organization and its volunteers, and to extend our support and best wishes to Twin City Mission and memorialize the occasion of their sixtieth anniversary, proclaimed this twenty-fifth day of July, twenty twenty-three. So, who wants to come up and speak?
Okay, all right.
Well, thank you, yeah.
We can adjust that down.
Thank you, Commissioners, for that proclamation, and I'd like to introduce the folks that came with me today, Frances Johnson, our Board President, Anne Stasny, who is on our Board of Directors, and then two of our Directors from Twin City Mission, Lindsey Smart and Ron Crozier. And I just want to say, we are so looking forward to our celebration on August the twelfth. Sixty years started as a downtown homeless shelter for men, overnight shelter, and has expanded to all the programs that you heard, and we are very excited and thankful for the community support that we have been receiving over the past sixty years. Unfortunately, the services that we offer are still needed and will continue to be needed throughout the community, but we're here to provide those services with your support, and thank you so much, Judge Peters.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we appreciate everything that y'all do, Twin City. I mean, it's just like you said, the needs haven't gone away, and they're not, so we appreciate everything y'all do.
Well, thank you. Can we get a photo?
We'll take some pictures, yes. We'll take some pictures here.
If, move over so you can come in the middle. Yeah, move over so the Commissioners can be in there. No, no, you stand up, put that between you.
Okay.
All right, one, two, three. You got one more, just three. Wanda, you're like behind, Wanda step a little bit to your left. Two, three, thank you. One, two, three.
Thank y'all for what you do. You've done great work.
Thank you.
Let's see, we still need to vote on that, don't we? All in favor say aye. Opposed, non-motion carries. Number four, resolution twenty-three dash zero one seven, authorize the Brazos County settlement pending claims for the clean, decent litigation against Volkswagen in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number five is authorization of the county judge or other authorized official to execute the settlement participation and release forms regarding settlement offers in the amount, in the matter of Texas opioid multi-district litigation for the county in the matter of Brazos County versus Purdue, former LP, et al.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six is request from Sheriff's Office for approval to accept a donation in the amount of eight thousand dollars from the city of Wixson Valley to be deposited into the SO crime fund account.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seven is considering possible action on a county burn ban. Jason, you'll come up and speak to us.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. It's been a little while since I've been up here with you, talking about the dry weather, but currently with the temperatures ranging anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and four the next week or two, the winds are picking up and we have what we call dry heat in the area where relative humidity is going down, and all that, you know, equals extreme fire behavior. So your control burns can get out of hand pretty quickly and cause problems for your firefighters. So, right now, our drought index is sitting at about six hundred and seventy-three as far on average, with the maximum value at seven hundred and twenty-seven and a minimum is five seventy, or five sixty-two. Most of Brazos County is in that average of around six hundred and seventy-three, so really, really dry. Right now, the U.S. drought monitor is showing Brazos County to be a normally dry category with the moderate drought just to our west. Currently, you all received the fire report yesterday, Burleson County has, since that fire report, has enacted a burn ban as well, bringing Burleson County, Leon County, Robertson, and Madison Counties all having burn bans in place. With no rainfall or drought busting rainfall in the near forecast, the four volunteer chiefs are recommending a burn ban at this time because, you know, we're looking at the future, looking at what's going on around us in other counties, their activity is picking up. Currently Brazos County is limited on how many fires they've run on in the last couple of weeks, but being proactive, they're requesting a burn ban, so I'll be available for any questions if y'all have any.
Okay, thank you, Judge. The moves that we established a burn ban. Second.
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded to establish a burn ban. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think when you get the four volunteer fire chiefs wanting one, there's no question about it.
Having been traveling, you see it all up and down the highway.
Yeah.
In other locations.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries, and that's effective immediately, so we'll contact news media and tell them. Eight is a request from Human Resources to write off an outstanding account receivable in the amount of five hundred and eighty-four dollars, the amount is believed to be uncollected.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number ten is approval of following job descriptions.
Move approval A through E.
Second. Motion made, seconded to approve A through E, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number ten is approval to increase Dynastycloade credit card limit from a thousand to five thousand dollars for Sergeant Stephen Guerin to assist Brazos County Sheriff's Office with conferences, hotel reservations, and other needs.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eleven is reallocation of previously earmarked American Rescue Plant Act funds from the following projects to be used for previously identified projects.
Move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number twelve is approval of amendment number one to contract twenty-two dash one forty-nine residential services with juvenile offenders with Gulf Coast Trade Center.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number thirteen is approval of amendment number one, renewal to bid twenty-three dash twelve R janitorial services for Brazos County with first commercial janitorial.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number fourteen is approved renewal contract twenty-three dash zero nineteen R fuel with Fikes wholesale.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number fifteen, approval amendment number one to twenty-three dash zero sixty-seven short-term detention for juvenile offenders with Anderson County.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number sixteen is approval of renewal contract twenty-three dash one nineteen R for third-party guardianship services to Brazos County with MERS, senior care management.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seventeen is approval of amendment number one to twenty-three dash one thirty-three short-term detention of juvenile offenders with Wharton County.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eighteen is approval of amendment number one to twenty-three dash one forty-seven short-term detention of juvenile offenders with Leon County.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number nineteen is approval of amendment number one, twenty-three dash one forty-eight short-term detention of juvenile offenders with Limestone County.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number twenty, approval of amendment number one, twenty-three, number one to twenty-three dash one fifty-two short-term detention of juvenile offenders with Polk, San Jacinto, and Trinity Counties.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number twenty-one is approval of amendment number one to twenty-three dash one fifty-three short-term detention. Number 21 is approval of Amendment Number One to 23-153 Short Term Detention of Juvenile Offenders with Waller County.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 22 is approval contract 154 Long Term and Short Term Residential Services with Hayes County.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 23 is approval of the following committee for RFP CIP 23-542 Road and Bridge Equipment Shed.
Move approval A through F.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve A through F, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 24 is award of RFP CIP 23-548 Brazos County Expo Complex Concrete Work Recommended to Ward as Larry Young Paving, Inc. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 25 is approval contract CIP 23-575 roofs, Phase Eight Sheriff's Office with JCO Roofing.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 26 is no award for RFP CIP 23-583 Construction Consultant for Medical Examiner's Office due to a lack of proposal responses.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion.
Yeah, just update. I know this is a ARPA project and that we're on a deadline and I'd like to hear about what the plan is and making sure we're not delaying things here. Do we need to just bypass going with a construction consultant or what's the recommendation?
The statutes provide that for services in excess of $50,000, we do the bidding process, which we did. We received no responses, so the statutes allow us to take other measures to procure services that the county needs. And so we are attempting to, we have contacted several companies and we are attempting to get those services and negotiate the best rates possible in allowance with those. Now, we will not be able to use ARPA funds for that process. If we were going to use ARPA funds, our grant consultant has suggested that we go out for bid again and try to take extraordinary means to procure those services in that manner. Due to the timeframe, we don't think that we have enough to do that, so we're continuing to go forward and try to get the consultant services through the best means possible, but it would mean that we're using general fund money for those particular funds.
Thank you for that clarification. And I know we awarded, well, week before last, we did award the.
Can you speak up, please?
We did award the architect.
Yes, sir.
On that. Architect, have any input or thoughts on who, because I know that we chose them because of their experience in building these types of facilities. Have they given us any input on who we might want to make sure we contact?
They have not, and nor have we sought their input, because this third party would help to keep them accountable, to make sure that they stay within budget and on timeframe as well. And so we wanted to make sure we had a clear line of delineation there to make sure that they kept the architect, the design firms, as well as the construction firm accountable to the county.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we have not voted on that, correct? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 27 is approval contract CIP 23-597 roofs, Phase Six Facilities, Washington Street and with JCO Roofing.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 28, award of IQ 24-004 Portable Toilet Rental Recommended Ward is Model Equipment Rental Sales and Sales.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 29 is approval of Amendment Number One, Renewal to Bid 24-006R for Sex Offender Treatment Provider Services for Brazos County with Augustine Gutierrez Jr.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 30 is approval of bid renewal 24-010R Fire Extinguisher Sprinkler System Inspection, Maintenance, and Testing with Grave Fire Solutions LLC. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 31 is approval contract 24-020 Guardian Tracking with Sheriff's Office with Target Solutions Learning LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 32 is approval of contract 24-021 for Copy Your Maintenance with Texas Document Solutions. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 33 is permission to advertise bid 24-028 Jury summons.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 34 is considered to take action on Weldon SUD's Utility Permit Construction Board, 150 feet in length, for a one-inch waterline crossing under INGN Road located 2,500 feet north of Capstone Drive, site located Precinct 1. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 35 is considered to take action on Wixon Creek SUD Utility Permit to construct 60-foot road board for a one-inch waterline crossing under Man Cuso Road located 3,168 feet northeast of FM 2223, site located Precinct 2. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 36 is approval of final plat of Mendez Acres, Lot 1 through Lot 5, Block 1, 14.944 acres, James D. Alcorn Survey, A60, Brazos County, Texas, site located Precinct 2. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 37 is considered to take action on Wildfire Energy Operating LLC Permit to lay a 12-inch temporary line on Sims Lane Cut Off, distance 2,400 feet for oilfield activities, site located Precinct 4.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 38 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval A through L.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded to approve A through L, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 39 is Budget Amendments FY 2223 Budget Amendments, 40.01 through 40.09.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion.
I just was glad to see that a number of those items involve getting our road bond money out and starting to work on those projects there, so I'm pleased to see that that's going into action.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 40 is personnel change of status.
Move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 41 is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8123355 through claim number 8123595, and claims number 9008014 through claims number 9008117.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. We will skip down to number 45.
44.
Okay, yeah, you're right. Number 44 is acknowledgment of FY 2223 Budget to Actuals by Funds as of July 18, 2023, and an acknowledgment of FY 202223 Contingency Budget to Actuals as of July 18, 2023. And number 45 is acknowledgment of the monthly reports submitted July of 2023. Number 46 is juvenile director's report on detention population. Linda.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We presently have 29 juveniles in detention, 26 males, three females, and we have 29 on electronic monitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. 47 is sheriff's report on inmate population. Chief.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This morning, we have 720 total inmates, 625 males, 95 females, and we have 45 on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you. 48 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Yes, I want to take this opportunity to wish Chief Martinez a happy birthday and my gift to you is I will not send.
Judge, a couple of things. Still looking forward, hopefully we can get an update on the status of the Veterans Treatment Court. And I'm really pleased to report that at the NACO National Convention in Austin this weekend, Texas was successful in getting Wise County, Texas Judge JD Clark elected as second vice president.
Any other announcement of interest items or possible future agenda topics? 49 is call for citizens' input and our concerns, and I didn't have anybody that turned in anything. So we will go back to, number 42. And we've got three executive sessions. Texas Government Code 551.087 Deliberating and Aggregating Economic Development Negotiations. B is Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated. And Counselor, I think that's the one we have to take action on.
Yes, sir. Judge, I'm handing to the staff my letter determining that deliberation in open court would have detrimental effect on the position of court negotiations with a third party as required by the statute. And unanimous, those require as you all know.
Okay, we'll need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for the discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Synonymous, motion carries. And then C is Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation of duties of county personnel. And of course, need the court, insurable, both attorneys, probably for the contracts and the others. Katie's going to need to be in there, Nina. When we get to HR.
Is Kim here this morning for?
I beg your pardon?
Is Kim here this morning?
She is.
No, she's still in Austin.
Not here.
On her way back.
Was there anybody else we need? I know we'll need, probably for personnel, we'll need Rihanna or so, but I think that will be last. And Jack, too, for that last one. But it is 10:31 and we'll go in and convene in for those first two first. Okay, you ready? All right, so we're coming out of executive session. It's 11:26. There's no action to be taken on any of that, I don't believe, so next item is to adjourn.
Okay, we have.